Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty. I'm calling the meeting to order. We are the Graham Planning and Zoning Board. We're here to hear the city's business tonight. If you're here to speak about a matter, you will get an opportunity to speak. If I don't call on you, just raise your hand and we'll be sure to to recognize you. At this time, I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Huthine?
Here.
Mr. Van Ness?
Here.
Chair Dean Ward's here. Mr. Wooten?
Here.
President.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Thank you. And if everyone would please stand for the pleasure.
The flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands. One nation, one government, liberty and justice for all.
Anybody had an opportunity to look at the October seventeenth meeting minutes? If so, entertain a motion to approve them.
No move.
Go here with second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right, Cameron, new business under number six A.
Yes, sir. Did you want to, um, as I mentioned during the last meeting, it stayed during the minutes as well. Two meetings ago, we had the election for the, I guess, new appointed vice chair for the board. I don't know if you want to address that as well.
Yeah, we might as well take care of that before we go to six A.
Yes, sir.
I think there was a procedural error in the last nomination for the vice chair, and we need to do that again tonight. I'll open up any nominations for vice chair. I'll nominate Mr. Wooten. Any other nominations? Right here, a second.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank y'all so much, and thank y'all for addressing that as well. So up next, we have a conditional rezoning request on behalf of Clayton Properties Group Incorporated. This is a request to rezone fifty-three point nine zero four acres of property from R eighteen low-density residential to CR conditional residential for the purpose of extending the fourth phase of Rogers Springs to construct an additional ninety-two single-family homes. The site plan connects, plans to connect to public right roadways, water, and sewer through the existing phases of Rogers Springs. The property is mostly inside of the suburban residential future land use zone, while the area near the river makes up the rural residential area, which can't be built upon due to it being in the floodway. The future land use plan notes the principal uses in the suburban residential zone predominantly are made up with detached, single-family homes, and the appropriate density is three to six dwelling units per acre. The development comes in below the appropriate density, which with the three to six, the three per acre would be one hundred sixty-one units, and the six being the three hundred eighteen units. And that's for the full area being taken into consideration, including the floodway, floodplain, everything else, so. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Anyone from Clayton Properties Group here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paul Waller. I'm with Bowman Consulting Group. Address is one zero three zero Perimeter Parkway, Charlotte, North Carolina. As I mentioned, my name, my name is Paul with with Bowman Consulting Group. We are the civil engineer working on this project. We also have Jason Ewing and Chandler Turpin with with Sugar Homes, who is part of the Clayton Properties Group. And I, I wanted to just kind of give a brief overview of the project, given, given the previous application and rezoning request that was submitted, but then withdrawn at a city council meeting. This, this is the, the same site location, same project, Phase Four of Rogers Springs. Here's a site location map. The, the subject site is highlighted in red. Phases one through three are to the west of this development for Rogers Springs. There's also the existing Forks of Alamance subdivision to the west there as well. Going to the next slide, access was discussed in the previous planning board meeting, so kind of wanted to highlight what, what the access is for, for Phase Four. It, it will be accessed all through existing intersections and access points. One is Channel Street. That is part of the, the Phase One improvements for Rogers Springs. There's also an access point at Lacy Holt and Rogers Road and Mayfield Drive. And those, the second two points are part of the, the Forks of Alamance subdivision. Also to note on the Channel Street access, there, there was a, a southbound left turn lane installed at that access point required by NCDOT as part of the Phase One improvements for Rogers Springs. To, to highlight some of the, the proposed site conditions, this is a similar, similar layout to what, what planning board had saw a few months ago. Overall property, as, as Cameron mentioned, was is fifty-three point nine acres. Of that, about twenty-three acres are, there is undisturbed open space and will be. As Cameron mentioned, there is, there is a flood zone floodway on this property with, with the big Alamance Creek to the south of the site. As far as density and lot count for this development, we are proposing eighty-four lots on this subject parcel. There are a total of ninety-two shown on Phase Four, the Rogers Phase Four development plans. And that's because there are a few lots on the west portion that are on the adjacent parcel that, that are part of Phase Three subdivision, and so those parcels will get subdivided and incorporated into the Phase Four subdivision. But as far as the, the annexation or rezoning request, it's on this fifty-three acres, and there are eighty-four lots on that, on that parcel. So from a density standpoint, we are proposing a one point six units per acre to the overall site acreage, so that's the, the fifty-three point nine acres with, with the developable area of about thirty acres, taking out the, the floodplain and, and just the, the undevelopable space on this property. We are at a two point eight units per acre density, so that is still below the, the three to six units per acre as identified in the comprehensive plan. So, so to highlight some of the, the proposed site conditions and, and what we have changed since our previous application and submittal. One, one of the big items that came up in the city council meeting was incorporating some, some active open space into this development, this Phase Four of the development. So, so we went back as a team and kind of identified some areas that made sense. This, this area right here shown in, in green is about a third of an acre, and we are proposing this as, as an active open space. A couple, a couple other things to highlight here. We, we do have sidewalk access to this with, with the thought that residents will be walking to this area and then a sideways access into this open space. This is next to a, a lot and which is Lot Fifty-Five. We wanted to make sure we're incorporating some sort of screening for whoever ends up purchasing that lot. So we do, we do call out and we'll incorporate a, a ten-foot evergreen buffer between the open space and that, that specific lot. As far as the, the actual use of that area, it's still kind of unknown at this point and still trying to, trying to figure that out. I know we have talked as a team about doing some sort of field or playground, potentially the dog park benches, some sort of active open space in this area. So that, that was a, that was something that came up in city council, and we wanted to make sure that, that we felt we, we were addressing, addressing that, that concern and that need. And with this being a conditional rezoning, I wanted to make sure that, that's highlighted and identified on this plan so that it carries through the application. The other couple of things that do want to call out are the, the driveway stubs, or sorry, the roadway stubs for, for this Phase Four development. There is land to the north of this site that has, has some developable space on it. And given the ordinance requirements and just discussions with staff, we, we have incorporated two stubs to that property, and it's highlighted there with, with the blue arrow. And what we are proposing are the, the typical City of Graham residential roadway sections throughout the development. So those portions has, has sidewalk come both sides of the road, a sixty-foot rideaway width. And, and yeah, just, just meeting the, the city standards. This is the west, west portion of Phase Four, so the next slide shows, shows the east portion of Phase Four. Here, the, the blue arrow identifies the second roadway stub to for future connection to future development. And a couple revisions since, since our last plan. We, we did redo the, the cul-de-sac down on the, the south portion of, of this plan. We, we got some feedback from TRC just about fire access to, to this area, and, and we revised the, the width of that cul-de-sac to, to meet the, the fire comments that, that we received. The, the other things to mention, just, just the, the flood zone, we, we are not proposing any development or disturbance within the, the flood zone. So all of our limits of disturbance are outside of that shown here on the plan. And we, we did submit to the technical review committee back in September for our, our civil plans and received a round of comments and have that TRC meeting with staff and, and the review committee to discuss the, the comments and have incorporated them in this latest site plan. Wanted to make sure that those were that the first feedback was incorporated into our, our rezoning conditional site plan. So happy to, to an- answer any questions or discuss anything else. And also, again, sugar representatives are here to, to answer any specific questions about, about the, the proposed subdivision.
Thank you. You would just make sure no one has any questions. I don't want you to have to get back and forth up.
Sure.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
Yes, sir. It's L A W L E R.
Other questions at this point?
Van Ness?
No question.
Huthine?
Can you tell me where the mailbox is going?
Yes, so, so there are mailbox areas identified in, in previous phases of this development. So looking to, to utilize the, the spaces incorporated on, on the previous phases.
For the lots that are fifty-seven through sixty-two and forty-one through forty-seven, was there a consideration for additional active open space in the rears of those to avoid the double frontage?
So, so we did look at that. There is a significant grade difference between Mayfield Drive and Channel Street. So we didn't need to try and make upgrade in, in some locations, so that is why we have that kind of large open space. And we are, at this point, planning for that to be private property on, on a lot.
And finally, is this low density, less than twenty-four percent, or is there stormwater offsite somewhere else?
Stormwater is not, is not handled offsite. This is low-density development, so, yeah, that.
No further questions.
Thank you. Ben?
I have no questions.
I don't have anything right this second. Cameron, if you would, pull up a aerial of the adjoining properties. I want to see that they connect.
Microphone on.
So, I'm trying to see if there's a way I can kind of highlight. So this is the lot in question. Is this the aerial you were more or less referring to?
The partial right directly behind it. Who, who is that the?
Right here?
No, that's to the right of it. Yes, right in there.
Yes, sir.
His overlay was there, stub that goes to that property.
Yes, sir. So I think on what was shown is the, these two, this Flow Street. And you can see the Faust Family Properties LLC, that Flow Street connects to it, and also this Ammonate Court is also kind of those two access points in there. It's kind of hard to see, but if you look at this kind of corner piece of it right here. This is where that corner is at, and it's pretty much right here, and maybe right in this area is where the roadway connections will be made to that top piece of property. So that would allow for, if the Faust folks would be interested, I think it accesses both of these two pieces of property, maybe like right in this area and this one, but they both own it. So that would open up, if possible, an additional layer that could be built back there with existing roadways if they so choose. So it'd be another one of the things to have to come back in front of you all probably.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be landlocked. I know that was one of the big concerns at the last hearing that we had.
Yes, sir.
Hanging there. Thank you. Any further questions for anyone from the petitioner side? Anyone here would like to speak about this? Okay. If not?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Cameron a question or two.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
We discussed it, but just for the record, have we checked with the Board of Education or the county commissioners to find out about the influx of students that this will bring and whether Alexander Wilson and Southern Middle School, Southern High School can handle that influx?
I don't think it has been discussed. No, sir.
And they have not commented?
No, sir.
How about the traffic concerns on Rogers Road? Has that been addressed at all?
I believe NCDOT was involved on the first round of comments, and they didn't mention anything to the like of having to do any additional impacts or any upgrades to the Rogers Road area, the existing roadways through there. So I mean, something like that, when you're adding in homes, is typically what kicks into additional infrastructure requirements from NCDOT when you're making those connections. So they were involved, and it was not a comment made by them, so. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I've got one other question. I just remembered.
Yes, sir.
If I could address Mr. Lawler again, please. The land that's in the floodway, flood zone?
Yes, sir.
I may have missed this. Was there any plan for that? I know you said, I think you said, no development, but is there any plan to use it for recreational space, anything else? Or is it just going to lie follow?
No, sir. Not, not at this point. There, there's no plan to touch or disturb that, that floodway area at all.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
What do you guys have planned for, is there a plan for trees, road, tree scapes for, for the development?
As far as like landscaping inside and in the right of way?
That's it, like yard trees and things of that sort.
Yeah, as far as trees on specific lots or within the right of way.
On specific lots.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure that there are requirements in the ordinance for plantings on the specific lots. But I, may, maybe I'll let Sugar answer that question on, on their, their typical lot configuration.
Yeah, Chandler Turpin with Sugar Homes Company of Clayton Properties Group. So we do, although it's not shut on this plan yet, we take great pride in, in our product. We typically plan at least one tree per lot on the frontage side. And then, depending on the requirements of each municipality, we'll do frontage trees as well. We'll do a complete package typically on the entrance to a community, depending on the phase. But we do have a plan. Typically, we'll put one larger, yeah, evergreen or maple in a yard, and then we'll do landscaping on the front of the home as well, some hollies and different things to that manner. So, yeah, we, we do like to make our homes more presentable and not just build a, a standard product, so, yeah, absolutely.
Was a traffic study done for traffic count for coming in and out of this subdivision?
I, I, I'm not aware of it. There, there hasn't been one done for the Phase Four development. Previously, I, I was not involved in, in the one through three phases of Rogers. But I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, Cameron, do you have any, any knowledge of that?
I, I do not. I think a lot of the approvals for the Rogers Springs Phase One through Three previously was, uh, I mean, just rezoned and subdivided out. I don't think NCDOT required any TIA's and the city didn't either, but let me go back through and look through some of the documents to make sure, but off the top of my head, I don't think there was.
They did install a turn lane, didn't they?
Yeah, but that doesn't typically come from, I guess, traffic impact analysis, more or less of just, I guess, the road trip generation and understanding the uses and requiring that within the subdivision itself, so extending that right away and adding that turn lane coming in. So I don't know if that's particularly coming from them requiring them to do a traffic impact analysis, but based on the number of uses and, uh, no, or the, based on the use and number of units that are being proposed back there is probably what causes it, and then NCDOT does on there. They have some matrix, I guess, that they go off of, but let me go back to it and see if I can find anything.
Regarding vegetation, what, what is the current state of that property? Is it pretty well clear level? Does it have old growth trees? What's, what's the current state?
Uh, there, there are, there are existing trees, significant topo throughout the, throughout the property, so there will be earthwork and earth moving on the portion, the developed portion that we show on the plans.
And what is your typical action plan regarding existing vegetation? Do you try and save as much of it as possible, or?
Sure, yeah, and, and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do on the south, south side. With, with the topo across the site, we do have gray differences between the two roads that run east, east and west. And so we're creating lots on that south, on the southernmost road, in the south side of that road. And then we're providing some space for a backyard, and then we're tying in grade as quickly as we can and before the, the floodway. And so we'll, we'll have erosion control plans. We, we have those in, in the TRC set that show the, the tree save delineated line for the limits of disturbance and making sure that we are controlling any sort of erosion in that area and then, and sedimentation runoff.
Any further questions?
Cameron, do you know the total number of lots in the job built out?
Like currently, um, that's currently out there or Phase One through Three?
Let's take Phase One through Three, add up, and then add the ninety-two to the, or ninety-four, whatever it was to the total. Do y'all know?
Off the top of my head, let me look. I'm scooping through their files as well. Looks like originally, from the subdivision approval, was around, from what it states on one of the notes, a, a number of one hundred and forty-eight was thrown out, but that's just off their first set of submittals. But let me look on their TRC approved plans for Phase Three and see if it has the total on there or not, unless one of the Sugar people can help me out here.
Now, I, I'll just say this to my fellow board members. I, I can see on the, what appears to be a recent aerial, there was some widening, fresh asphalt along Rogers Road that would indicate they were gonna build turn lanes. The aerial probably just hasn't caught up to that, so there's probably the turn lanes there for the whole project. And this additional phase was likely factored into that count. That's speculation, but I only count a hundred, a hundred and twenty trips per day on that eighty-two lot, fifty-three acres, so it wouldn't meet an, an additional study warrant. I can tell, but it was probably looked at entirely when it was first conceived.
Yeah, so it looks like Phase One through Three is about a hundred and fifty-one total lots, and then it has Phase Four with seven, and I think that's that existing little piece that we were looking at at the very top. And then you take that seven minus the, uh, or, so take a hundred and fifty-one and then add the ninety-two pretty much, so. And a lot of the comments regarding that turn lane came through those first rounds of TRC notes, um, just based on their traffic generations of the, I guess, data or formula the NCDOT had that made that requirement.
Roughly two hundred and forty-three units. Further questions? Further questions? I've closed the public hearing, and we'll have a discussion between the board members here. Any thoughts?
Chair, there's one thing that I would like to note, I guess, just as a, a point of clarification that wasn't brought up during the staff report. But typically, when we're dealing with these conditional rezoning requests, they're specifically held to those R nine standards unless otherwise asked for. And on the plan, there are some lots on here that are a little bit below that nine thousand square foot threshold. So I just wanted to point out, there's five lots, I believe, that are a little bit below it. There's one that's, the lowest is that seven thousand nine hundred ninety-three. So just wanted to make that aware, so if you move to recommend anything approval-wise, the condition to include that the lots that we may speak on in a little bit be included in that to, I guess, have at least that amount of what's shown on the plans, so.
Okay, thank you.
And that's about all I have.
You mentioned this came before, planning board and council before. What were the objections?
Mr. Wooten, do you mind turning your mic on and speaking into it, sir? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm asking, what is, this came before planning board and city council before, previously?
Yes, sir. So they were here about four or five months ago, maybe, with a rezoning request to change it to just R nine without the conditional aspect of it. It came in front of you all. It was a four to one denial recommendation, then it got to city council, and they were wanting them to go down this conditional route. And it got withdrawn at city council, and now we're back here with the conditional to go in front of city council in December and in front of you all right now. Thank you. I remember it now. Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Tovar? Did we get a copy of the proffered conditions, other than just the lot area? Are there other, other conditions that we're, we need to discuss or look at?
This is.
Is that the only condition?
This is the only one that I've picked out thus far, and I mean, even another one that has kind of come into fruition right now, the, well, the total conditional rezoning is going to encompass, I guess, the whole area that's being shown right here. And everything being included in there, including this active open space is included in that, and that's about the only thing that I could possibly think of. Is if you all were to view the conditional rezoning to stop at the property line, then including the active open space allowed in the other lot to be included in the conditional rezoning request, so. So the lot line basically runs right through here, and the open space is being utilized as, I guess, the greater area that was left over from a little bit of that Phase Three, that they're going to incorporate into this Phase Four. So the whole conditional request is just for this whole Phase Four. But I, like I said, it's kind of one of the things, if you wanted to make a condition to allow it to be incorporated on the other lot, then so be it. But I took this as a conditional as a whole, per se, what they're outlining between the two lots.
Cameron, point out those five or six lots that you were mentioning are smaller.
Yes, sir. So we'll start with lot number, I have it right here, fifty, that's, um, and do this. So fifty being this eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five, so it's right there under it. Forty and forty-one, which I believe are on the next page. Yes, sir. Where am I at? Oh, here it is. Forty and forty-one, eight thousand seven hundred thirty-nine, uh, seven thousand nine hundred ninety-three. Um, and lot number five as well on the first page too. So five, eight thousand nine hundred sixty-nine and lot ninety-two. Right here, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. So slightly below, but those are the five, the forty, forty-one, fifty, ninety-two and five.
Go back to, uh, five.
Yes, sir.
Why is that being as small in that areas or a typography problem in that area?
Um, not too sure. Um, probably just due to, uh, the, the setbacks through here and the lot lines, it just didn't allow them to get that additional, was it twenty-one, uh, square footage through here? Um, I don't see any easements that are running through. Uh, there looks like to be one in between here and three and four that could cause four to be pushing over a little bit and it's taking a little bit away from that number five. That's about the only thing that I could possibly think of. I guess the area between the two easements are squeezing in and they're taking away from the five. Or it could just be a condition to ensure that all of them meet the nine thousand requirements. So just wanted to at least point that out. So take it from other lots and meet that nine thousand or just allow them to.
I would certainly like to see if, um, if a motion comes, uh, that open space be designated, uh, with something other than open space. So whether it be playground, equipment, or dog park, fences or whatever. Any further discussion amongst the board members?
I guess I'm just not clear on what the conditions are. If it's an R nine development and there's five lots that are less than the nine thousand requirement, then is that the only condition that's requiring the trip through the conditional route? And is that what council wanted? Or were there other items that were discussed that we?
None that, oh, sorry. I cut you off. I apologize.
That's cool.
None that I was quite aware of. I think it just got in front of them and I think it's the whole aspect of being able to, um, cause when we go just straight R nine, there's not a requirement to have any quote unquote usable open space, right? So they could basically take all the floodway back through there and the area proposed to just leave it as just blank open space. Um, and I think that's one of the particular reasons why it's coming back is to, I guess, have a little bit more influence on some of the stuff that's going out there. That's just my understanding.
Public hearing is closed right now.
I just want to comment on, on that.
We, we, we've already closed the public. I'm sorry.
I'm just puzzled.
Uh, you know, I was at council and, uh, when this come before council and, uh, meeting. And, um, the biggest thing was it was just a canvas. In not knowing what they was gonna put on there. And that's why councils basically sent it back to planning board. So they come back with their engineer drawings showing exactly what they was gonna do. And if we wanna tighten it up just a little bit or, or a lot, we can with the conditional. I think they've presented a good plan here. Uh, the open space is just too vague though, in my opinion. Um, they're certainly under the density, um, requirement.
I personally feel like they need to meet other conditional with the size of R nine they have to reevaluate their layout. Those five lots.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion if someone like to put one forth.
Let me give this a shot here.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
I'd like to move that we approve this plan with the conditions as stated. With the, um, readjustment of all the lots should be, meet a minimum of nine thousand square feet. That, uh, do we, sorry, pause for just one. Do we want to get more specific about the la, uh, use of that open space?
Yes. I, I, I think we should get, we should, uh, but I don't wanna tie their hands to one thing. If you wanna give a couple things that it can be used for.
Okay. Also with the stipulation that the open space be used for some specific items like dog park, playground, whatever it might be, but just not left open.
Gazeebo. I said picnic area, gazebo.
It does, this, uh, recommendation does meet informity to the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. The applicable policies, policy five dot one dot one, housing variety, three dot three dot two, folks' development. And four dot three dot one land use patterns all meet those specific requirements.
Uh, Mr. Wood, would you consider, uh, adding a fence around the open space? Not saying that you have to. I'm just asking to consider if it's a dog park, you definitely would want a fence.
Right.
And I'm sure they'd be, if that's what they choose to do, they would put one. But if we had it, it certainly would have to do it.
Something to the effect that, um, if fencing is appropriate for the use, it'd be added as well.
That, that's appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Cameron, let's, uh, move on to the special use permit of twenty-three oh two.
Yes, sir. So this is a request for a special use permit, um, for a group home for a property located at six sixteen Hollow Street. Um, there's an existing single family dwelling on site. Um, and they are just requesting the use to be permitted on site, not necessarily building anything new, but just the request of the zoning, uh, use to be classified for this area. Um, under the current development ordinance, a group home is a facility with support and supervisory personnel that provides room and board, personal care or habilitation services in a residential environment for not more than six people. Granting this permit would permit up to six unrelated individuals to reside within the unit. Because it is a new use for the property, the development will be required to comply with all street parking requirements, uh, which are one space for each two residents of the driving age and ability plus one space per employee. That is all I have at the time.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery?
Evening. Um, I'm requesting to open the group home. It's gonna be a level three group home. Um, right now I have four beds that I would like to open for. Um, there'd be staff twenty-four hours. Um, there's currently four staff already trained and ready to go upon opening, um, of the group home. Um, I'm hoping to have, you know, provide some jobs in the area, starting between seventeen to twenty dollars an hour. So I'm hoping to, um, e- eventually expand as time goes on.
Ms. Montgomery, do you mind stating your address?
Uh, twenty seventy-six Jeffries Crossroad in Burlington, North Carolina, two seven two and seven.
Do you presently have any group homes in Graham?
Uh, not in Graham. Um, I tried to do some research on exactly how many Grahams were in Alamance County in general. I have found two. Um, I do know that there's other places that are considered group homes, but it's for the IDD population, not for troubled youth.
Cameron, um, did you research and see what the nearest, closest group home is? I know there's gotta be a distance between them.
So actually, in the special use requirements for the group homes, there's not necessarily one. It's more or less between the family care homes. And I think that is more or less to do to the, the fact of being, uh, a, um, a requirement of special use permit approval that everything listed in the special use requirements doesn't mention a distance between, but the family care home is mentioned a five hundred foot radius. And even with the family care homes, um, I don't think this falls within that five hundred foot radius either.
Any questions for Ms. Montgomery? Starting with Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Fine.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Can you define level three group home?
Uh, level three is a, um, a more, it's a stricter atmosphere. Um, it's therapeutic where I will have therapists come in and deal with the children and they will have their group sessions plus their individual sessions at home. Um, the twenty-four hour staffing, you know, it's, uh, being strict as where there's no use of electronics. Um, these kids are here for a reason. So we're here to provide structure and, uh, discipline. Um, we're trying, the point is, is that they wanna reunify some of these children, but you can't if you put them in places where they don't have the therapy, the necess, you know, the necessary treatment for their behaviors or a lot of times it's not even the children's be, you know, fault that they're there. It could be the parents, but um, they need direction and guidance. And this is what we're here for. There's many of children staying in uh, emergency rooms and the DSS offices. Uh, they have trailers currently and behind some of these DSS offices that the children have to stay in, which causes the social workers to have to stay there. I'm trying to provide a place for open beds, somewhere these kids can go and be guided in the right direction. So they're not here in the street causing havoc.
And what are the ages of the children and are they male and female or both?
Um, currently, um, the staff that I have is male. So, um, the first one that I plan on opening is male. Um, and they generally run between ages of seven to seventeen. Um, if I have teens, I won't take kids younger than seven. Usually it's usually between nine and seventeen that I normally see them come in.
And how many staff members are there at a time?
Uh, there will be two on at all times.
And staff, did the applicant provide the findings of fact? And can we take a look at those, please?
Um, I have the draft finding of facts and conclusions that's attached in your, um, packets as well. Um, I don't believe the applicant provided anything, but it is what provided with the draft that you all will see. Um, and this is also a legislative hearing as well. So it's not, um, even, I guess, a quasi judicial one either. So, uh, everything pretty much just draft. And this is a first look recommendation from you all to city council.
Ms. Montgomery, what's the size of that house there on, located on that lot?
I'm not exactly sure of the square footage. I know that it's a, a four bedroom house. Um, three of the bedrooms will be occupied by residents.
Three?
Three, yes. The other one, um, it doesn't have a closet. So it's under, under the, under the assumption that I couldn't use it as a bedroom. So it's gonna be more like just a little office area. That's why I'm only, um, having four beds.
So do I, you're offering to share beds in a room? In other words, two beds in one room?
Yes, sir.
Then there is adequate space for the staffing and kitchen area?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
Um, my last question, uh, is the lot itself, uh, is it fenced in or have any security?
It is fenced in currently, yes. And I will be adding, um, an alarm system to all the windows and doors. Um, you know, the cameras, uh, inside, in the front, in the back of the property. Um, so it, everything's going to be extremely secure, secure so that if anything, a window's open, staff's gonna know immediately. Um, we're gonna have other, uh, mobile devices that the staff will have on them that is logged on specifically for the alarm system. So it's not to their, you know, their own smartphones so that they know if something goes off or somebody tries to escape that they will be alerted.
Have you, uh, spoken to any of the neighbors and around that?
Um, well, the neighbors, I've, the one to the right of the property, we're very familiar with. He does, you know, lawn work for us there at the property. He's aware that, um, the other neighbor to the left of them has passed away. There's nobody there currently. Um, and I hadn't gotten to talk to anybody else.
When, uh, back to the fencing, is that fencing chain link or is it, uh?
Um, there's chain link in the back and then there's a wooden in the front, uh, in the front of the house. But when you go into the back, it is chain link. And I do believe that some of the portions also have the, um, the wooden panel chain, um, panels, I'm sorry, um, in some portions of the back, the back panel there.
Will there be a curfew that people will be required to be inside?
Yes, um.
What will that be?
Well, we're working out different, um, things, but usually generally everybody's in the house, you know, at dinnertime, usually latest by six o'clock ideally, um, during the week, um, they're, after dinner there, that's when either the therapy sessions or group sessions will occur. And then it's usually shower and bed. So, um, but the curfew will be eight P M, um, during the week. On the weekends, we have paid, uh, outings that would usually occur during the day in the afternoons. So usually there, again, they're in the, in home for the night meds. If, you know, if they have the night meds and usually generally eight P M, no one else leaves the house.
And any of these residents leave unsupervised at property at any time?
No, they have to be accompanied by a social worker or a, a DSS approved person. Um, if it's not our staff for our business.
So are these residents court ordered to be there?
Yes, sir.
What's the, uh, normal length of stay average? Do you have a?
It varies from case to case, to be honest. Um, usually, uh, if a child's removed from the home, from what I've seen, is usually it takes about two years before reunification even happens. Um, a lot of these kids are jumped from foster home to foster home during that case. If they can't find a foster home, then that's when they land in DSS or in the emergency rooms. Um, and I'm not sure if you saw on the news, the assaults that are happening in the emergency rooms, cause, uh, the nurses are just not equipped or trained to deal with that kind of stuff. And, you know, that's just a whole different ballgame when you have a kid in there that really needs, you know, the structure and, you know, we have, uh, I plan on putting a point system in place. Something that they can work to for incentives. Um, if they can get to the top point tier and maintain that, they'll be awarded extra privileges. It might be some, you know, supervised tablet time. Um, you know, things of that nature, things that are geared more towards that child. Um, they'll come in with a behavior plan from their behavior specialist, um, already through DSS, uh, that will be updated monthly. Uh, we have, uh, CFTs or which is, uh, child based meetings just to see how their progress is going. Um, we're under DSS and, uh, I'm sorry, Via Health on mandates too. So they'll be in there regularly to make sure that we are adhering to the rules and regulations as well.
And are you licensed by the state of North Carolina?
Um, well, I, I will be. I'm doing the license now. I'm working the lady at Via. Um, I just didn't know exactly how much to go ahead and jump ahead and do in case I was denied, I guess you could say, um, cause I was going gung ho in the beginning, trying to get everything done. And then, uh, somebody had pulled me aside and said, you might wanna wait and just make sure you go through planning. So it was new to me. It was some steps I wasn't aware of.
How long do you think it would be before you are licensed? Are you currently studying or are you already applying?
Uh, I'm in the process of applying now. I'm just waiting on some, uh, different paperwork to come back. Um, and it's a little bit of a bear of an application to go through. Um, but the lady at, um, Via, I'm waiting on the letter of support to come in. Um, I think with the holidays, she's not in the office currently. So by the next meeting, I will be, I will have the letter of support and all that that I need. Um, they usually say it takes thirty to sixty days generally on the sixty day side to, to license. So I was looking, trying to aim for February, March to open if possible.
Got several questions for you, ma'am. You use, uh, an acronym that I'm not familiar with, I D D?
Oh, um, intellectual development is delayed.
Okay, thank you. Um, question about the all street parking. None of these kids will be able to be driving or anything like that?
No.
Would the use of the group home ever change to where you would have residents who would be of driving age or ability?
If there are no level three group home, that will not be allowed. Um, I know of children that do go to driver's ed while being in a level three group home. But it's generally somebody outside of the group home driving those children, whether they get, uh, DSS assist them at getting the driving school, or they have a family member that is, uh, okay through DSS. I currently do that with my niece. I have a niece who is in a level three group home currently. Um, but she's out in Rockingham. She's, has her, her permit. Um, I drive her as much as possible. But being almost two hours away, it's not very possible. Um, Um, but being them at the group home, staff would not allow, would not be allowed to drive those those people that would have to be from an outside source, if they work with their social worker, of uh, approved family members, such, things like that.
So the intention is to remain a level three group home?
Yes.
One other question about what's on the property right now, I drove by there, it looks like there's the main house and then a smaller house.
Yes, sir.
On the same property.
Yes.
Can you explain that, please?
Um, the smaller um, house is, the bottom is a garage like a storage area. Above that is a one-bedroom apartment that the lady, um, who, Mary Tyree, who owns the property, um, she rents out currently, um, plans are to eventually have that person move out, I will use that as an office space. Um, and then storage down um, below, uh, just for, I don't know, miscellaneous stuff, maybe seasonal things.
So it would not become a part of the?
No, it wouldn't be none for the residents, it would be just for me and my personal office area, so I can have my computer, I don't have to worry about, you know, anything touching or damage to any of my office equipment or anything like that.
Thank you. Uh, repeat to me how many residents you're planning on having there?
Four.
Four residents? What do they do for school?
Um, well, when they come, I get the referral from DSS, we currently have to um, contact the school system. Um, we set up a meeting with the be- the behavior specialist at the school. Um, it usually takes about a week to get them in, from what I've seen, um, and there's the options of either Ray Street, um, depending on what they have on their school record currently. Um, or there's, you know, Graham Middle, Graham High School, um, but it, it will depend when we talk to the school board, what their recommendations are for which school they will attend.
What is your process if um, you have an unruly patient? Other than police, uh, do you continue to keep them, do you kick them out, do you move them to a different facility, what is the process?
Well, the process that I want to follow will be that we're going to keep the children and, and work with them as much as we can, until they become a, a threat to themselves or the other children in the house, to where it can't be handled by staff. Um, that process usually will take thirty days, where they will get a, receive a thirty day notice. Um, and then we will work with DSS and trying to find them another placement, if it's deemed that, but um, I had a brother with Down syndrome who was in group home, um, I had him jump from, they jumped him from house to house to house to house. It was very, um, he didn't deal with change well, as a lot of these kids don't. Um, I found that every time they moved him, it was a new, a new behavior, a new episode, um, another trip to the hospital. Um, so our main mission is to keep these kids in house and work them through their behaviors, cause they're gonna test us at every corner. I mean, that's just what it is, that's the nature of the job, um, we're here to make a change, we're not here just to have them come in and bounce them all around. Um, working with behavior specialists, their therapists, uh, the schools, um, just being strict and structured is my plan for the, trying to change some of these behaviors. I currently have a brother who um, works as an R B T, which is a behavior specialist, um, he is at a state right now. Um, but I picked through him a lot on some of the techniques and ways to try to you know, turn these kids around and redirect them. Um, but it's just I've seen so many kids with my niece and my nephews being in care, just being hopped all over the place. Not feeling as a place to, you know, call home, not so much that a group home was home, but if you live treated as a family environment and keep them structured, it's going to help guide them into a better direction.
Cameron, would you pull up the language uh, for family care homes and group homes?
Yes, sir. So there's a uh, a specific difference between the two, and a lot of it is boiled down to the disability aspect of it. Um, whereas, you know, she mentioned the I D D, um. So here's your family care home, a home that provides room and board, support and supervisory personnel and personal care and abilitation services for two to six residents, resident persons with disabilities as defined by N C G S one sixty-eight, twenty-one or successor in a family environment. Um, and then you have your group home is a facility with support and supervisory personnel that provides room and board, personal care, abilitation services in a residential environment for not more than six people. This does not include family care homes, so it's that big distinction between disability, non-disability and where you toss those up at, um, and that's kind of what drove this one to be considered and classified as this group home aspect. Um, at least that's from staff's point of view and from the point of view we've gathered from previous requests and previous discussions with people from the school of government as well.
Um, bring up an area if you don't mind, I wanna see the closest churches and daycares and that are in that area, if we can see anything.
Closest church, I think. So, uh, this is probably the biggest landmark right here is the mill that recently burned down. This black dot right here is where six sixteen Hollow Street is at, this is Public Works right here.
Closest church is gonna be up there Providence and Washington. Can you enlarge that a little bit?
A larger, like this?
Oh, the other way. Chunk it down. Enlarge the picture now, yes.
I'll try my best, so back again, that might help out a little bit too, so here we are, there's the mill, um, a lot of, uh, I don't know exactly what this is.
Right across the street, there's one on Providence and Washington. Yeah, there's a church there on uh, Parker and Main. Think of a daycare there in that vicinity. There's daycare down from there, uh, was a curve.
Park Baptist Church right here?
Yeah. And on the west side of the street. Climax, I believe. Down the Friends Church. Down the church. Do, do you know of any daycares in the facility, in the close vicinity, not?
No, sir, not, um.
At Farm Bureau, I thought. Yeah, that's one of Climax, Farm Bureau. That was real, pretty close to that.
And again, um, you know, looking through the requirements of a group home and it mentions, you know, the C note twenty-three and there's no other specific conditions associated with the special use permit. Um, there's not really anything that mentions that it shouldn't be within a perimeter of such, um, just specifically states that it shall be reached very variety of means of transportation, access to transit sidewalk, um, it doesn't say that it shouldn't be within an X amount of location from something else.
I'm just concerned about safety of the general public with uh, I'm not saying there is a problem or
Yes, sir.
But I'm just concerned about putting high-risk people um, that close. Whether they're seven years old or whether they're seventeen years old, that don't, that don't affect me either way there, uh, in the close proximity of a daycare. I think we've had this issue, we've talked about this before, there was another one that was uh, brought before, it's not too long ago. Providence right there, or Washington Street right there in Providence. It was a house right there, right from the convenience store.
Exactly.
And thi- this brings back some of the questions that was asked about that particular one also, I don't remember what council done with it, but there was some question about the safety and security of the general public. She has stated there was gonna be fencing, there was gonna be monitors and alarms, um, systems. But it just concerns me.
Yes, sir, and um, you know, this is, I guess, what it boils down to when you're looking through these uh, you know, finding the facts and conclusions, it doesn't necessarily say that it, it doesn't have to be within X amount of feet from it, but I guess, uh, ultimately that'll be up to where the city council decides if, you know, they meet these six requirements based on the location of where they're at and everything else around them too, so.
Any further questions?
Uh, Cameron, what happens if this is approved and in two years she's done and out, what happens to the property at that point?
Well, it's still classified as a group home through the specific use, so, I mean, somebody could then come and fill it in. Um, as long as it doesn't lay vacant for, uh, what's the time period, there's a specific one hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days.
So if she loses or doesn't do anything and we don't receive a special use or another, I guess inquiry about it within a hundred and eighty days, then the special use is stripped off of there, and if somebody wants to come and do it after that, they'd have to come back in front of you on city council as well. I think it's a hundred and eighty days at least, but it's, there's a time, a timeline.
Thank you.
At least.
One other question, mister.
Yes.
The proximity to the mill property, the one that just burned, is that any concern to you?
No.
Perhaps if one of these kids got out, they could get into that property, hurt themselves, is that any concern to you?
Um, it's not, um, being that the people that I have for staff are experienced in this field. Um, one being uh, twelve years in, um, with the security systems in place and the staff having personal monitors on them at all times, um, will know right away if the children leave. Um, there's only four kids, but there will be two staff at all times, um, there's eyes on all the time, there's not a, an asleep staff, so for them to get out, um, without our knowledge is highly unlikely, um, you know, we're, being in level three, we are not allowed just to let them leave. Um, you know, we, of course, we have to contact the, the police and call DSS and a social worker, but we will be with there, with there's two to one, two children to one staff. So um, I, I'm, I'm not very concerned about them getting out, um, I'm going through great lengths to make sure that the house is secured, so that does not happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Montgomery, you don't leave them confined in their rooms all day and all night, you let them out under supervised conditions
Yes.
To access the yard and area?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I have, um, we'll have a membership to the Y, I've um, I've done my budget based on that, um. The Y, um, they will have access to Grand Recreation, if, you know, when staff provided, that staff can take them. Um, but during the week, it's not too many outside outings, some of them, these kids will have, you know, therapy with a therapist in-house. Um, three, sometimes four times a week. Um, so they'll be, on the weekends is the paid outing where we go out, where there'd be movies, the Y, um, to the park, what have you. Um, whatever has, you know, scheduled for that week, what have you, um, and you know, they will have community time.
You take them as a group?
Yes.
Said Monday through Friday, they are in school.
Yes, but after school, you know, they have to come home, by the time, like my daughter doesn't come till five, so um, by that time, we're gonna be, you know, dinner. Therapists have to come in, um, you have to have a group session daily for at least thirty minutes. Uh, so there's not a lot of time during the day after school, um, for them to do stuff, summer it might be, is a, is a different story. Um, then we're gonna be looking into, um, you know, more outings throughout the week with staff. Um, they will be able to get out into the community, I plan on putting a, a basketball hoop in the back, we have a cement pad out there for them, so there will be activities to keep them busy. Um, but every time there's a, a outing, all, both staff go out with the four kids.
What prevents them from leaving if they wanna leave?
Um, I guess, there's not much besides staff.
Me, staff can't put their hands on them, right?
Um, well, depending on if it's in the behavior plan or not, um, we have to do have mental health, uh, restraint training, um, we have to keep that up every year. Um, now depending if it's in that child's behavior plan that we're not to let them leave, then we have to put hands on them and restrain them from not leaving. Um, if they walk out, um, these children know that this is their last step before they may go into a lockup facility. Um, nine times out of ten, they tried to walk, they walked to the edge of the property. They kind of just walk around a little bit, try to test the waters and they come back, the staff is out there with them. Um, usually we try to make sure that the staff that works best with the children, that child, particular child may try to go out and talk to them, um, but we're all trained in trying to problem resolution, um, trying to de-escalate the situation, not make it worse. Um, usually the child comes through, um, after they're there and they see that you're there for them. It, you will have some that may try to run, but nine times out of ten, if they know that you're there for them and they, they feel safe and you build a rapport with the children, they will not run.
Thank you.
I just have a few, just simply dimensional and logistical questions. Uh, I, I certainly appreciate the effort you're making and I just wanna make sure for the record, I think you'd mentioned you do not own the property currently, correct?
No, um, it's actually a family property, um, it's my husband's mother's property.
Okay.
It was in the family.
And you are currently not licensed but working on that?
Yes, sir.
And we, I think we need to know what the minimum area per resident um, requirement for the level three unit versus the size of the structure before we even proceed, so we might need to look at the tax records and see what the footprint of the home is. I calculate two staff plus four, uh, residents. That's six people in the home and then I'm certain there is a minimum, um, floor area requirement. Um, is it a possibility that one of the residents or one of the staff members would be handicapped?
No, not this property, um, well, handicapped as in wheelchair or?
Uh, they could have a wheelchair, they could have a cane, they can just, if they're handicapped, that's, that's something we have to consider for parking requirements or for access to the building.
For this property, no.
Be no handicap people.
Um, but as, as in handicap meaning I D D, maybe someone with Down syndrome, something like that, yes, um, in that um, form of handicap, but wheelchair and cane access, no. Well, I guess a cane, yes, but there would be, there's no ramps on the property.
That's right. Um, and, and also Cameron, while you're looking for the tax records for the size of the building, if you could also pull the street view for Hollow Street. And if you could tell us if there are any other group homes in this block between, I guess it's Parker and street to the south, I'm sorry. It's, in my, in my trip to the site, it was a completely single-family residential neighborhood. So, and I did not notice fencing along the front perimeter, only along the back and on the north side. With a significant grade change from the front porch to the curb, I did not notice any sidewalk present, which is one of the items for transportation and connectivity. Um, so I wanna make sure we're clear on all of these dimensional requirements and, and facilities before we move forward, we don't want the applicant to to pursue something, it's not physically gonna work without a, a heavy investment.
Is this something that's required through the city or through the state, um, this size requirement that you're mentioning?
It's a state requirement for the number of square feet per resident or number of square feet per resident and per uh, staff member. In my trip up and down Hollow, Hollow, I did not see any other uses but single-family uses here. And there's no sidewalk on the other side of the road. And the first thing that caught my attention during my visit was the significant grade change, and that's the reason I'm asking for the, for the, from the perspective of the handicap person. Cause if you have to go in and build a handicap space and a ramp, um, as part of the requirements that staff has already mentioned in their report, then you, you need to be aware of that.
Well, in the driveway, um, to the right of that white car, um, there's that wooden fence right there. That opens up for a car, um, that's actually how we moved stuff in and out of the building. You can drive up behind that apartment into the backyard, where there's a, uh, no more than two steps down, um, to get into the back door.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for the, for you, thank you.
Cameron, would that be a non-conforming use, um, there now?
This area back here? Pretty much, I mean, I don't know when this was built, but uh, if it's being operated as a second uh, lot or a second use on the lot, then yeah, pretty much, I mean, because we don't necessarily allow for accessory dwelling units through here now, so it has been operating, I don't know when it was CO'd. It seems to have an address back through here on it, I mean, there's a six eighteen that's listed right through here, or is that six sixteen? That's six sixteen, excuse me, so I mean, this is all one parcel number, they share the same address, but it's just an accessory use or accessory structure back there that's currently, like she says, being operated as a uh, a um, uh, extra space or rental space.
But if they change and there's not gonna be a rental space there now, is it gonna be a non-conforming use for her that she's gonna have to meet some other expectations? Because they're not gonna be using it as residential, she's gonna be using it as a commercial office.
So, I mean, it's uh, everything's pretty much site-specific here as well. Um, so it'd all be subject to the same aspects of the, the special use permit and the group home. Um, of course, nobody would be able to, uh, I guess Um, of course, nobody would be able to, uh, I guess from the rental scent, nobody, since nobody would be able to live back here. And reality, it's just a non-conforming, currently it's a non-conforming use, but if the use is abated, um, it's whether or not it's a non-conforming building or not. And if it's a non-conforming building, I mean, it can still pretty much stay there. Um, granted that it doesn't get destroyed and it still can have that same classification under the special use permit group homes where uh, predominantly or all of the group home activity is taking place inside of the single-family structure and this turns into an additional office space area back through here. That kind of makes sense.
Mr. Bailey, anything?
I have no questions.
More time? All right. Good. Thank you, ma'am. Cameron, if you would, uh, let's talk about how you want to proceed with this, uh, kind of like we did last time, is make a recommendation that we've heard it and not said any.
Recommendations, pretty much. It's, uh, a, as it states in, you know, the, and we've been through this multiple times, as it states in the development ordinance, the role of the planning board here is to hear the item and, um, basically, uh, states provide a recommendation to city council. Doesn't necessarily say that you have to provide a recommendation for approval or denial. Um, it could be a recommendation that you don't have one, um, and that's, I guess, to safeguard us against any potential litigation that may come up in the future as it was the last time we had a special use permit request in front of us, a month or two ago. Um, so it's completely deemed on how you all may see. Um, we've heard it, we've done our part as the planning board here, we've heard it, we've asked the questions, everything's been presented. I think we've given the applicant a fair opportunity to speak and everything, and it's completely up to you all if you want to make that recommendation to move forward without a recommendation or of approval or denial. It seems like there's still some, some things up in the air in regards to uh, um, some of the findings of facts and conclusions, and since we aren't in really a quasi-judicial hearing, um, it'll be relatively difficult to kind of delve into that and provide any specific conditions or finding of facts, so.
One thing that jumps out, Chairman, they tried there and the findings is access, uh, to transit sidewalk, and there is none.
Correct. And sidewalk would be one thing you want in a condition. If be considered. If we are thinking about recommending city council consider conditions. Sure that if any, if any one of you would, if you have a consideration, you would discuss it out loud here so we could potentially capture it if we're going to make a recommendation. If we're not going to make a recommendation, then I understand.
Mr. Chairman, so are we in a time of, there's no public hearing, this is a deliberation or discussion amongst the members?
A deliberation, a discussion.
Cameron, can we, can you pull up the tax record, give us the square footage? Did you do that already?
No, sir. Did y'all want to, um, close the public hearing while we're doing all this too? I don't know if we have our open one or closed it. So.
Close the public here.
Like.
Need it.
This building number one. Site built. Base square footage. I'm not intelligent.
On the following, on the following page, there you go. It should give you some, some areas there.
Right. There we go, screen porch, site built, porch.
So I don't know if, um, you know, we're adding both of these together or adding all of these together, or if this site bill is basically pretty much everything encompassed of what's ever been a total square footage. I mean, if we're looking at it, one thousand three hundred or one thousand thirty-six, or if we're adding in the five hundred and sixty of it as well, I guess we could kind of.
Two, two oh eight times thirty-seven.
Not two eight, uh, two six, two six and two two.
So you're adding the, you're adding the two numbers, five sixty plus ten thirty-six.
Okay, so what you're looking at here, the
Fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Oh, the two stretches.
Fifteen hundred ninety-six.
Yeah. Well, roughly sixteen.
Fifteen hundred ninety-six square feet is the total square footage, it seems.
On the property.
Yes. That's in. Um, that's the secondary house, I assume, which is, it's.
Probably was a garage.
Basically the same thing.
Changed into a dwelling.
So it could be that this is a.
Park underneath.
That would have a twenty foot wide by twenty-eight. Twenty by twenty-eight.
Got five sixty, roughly.
That's, yeah, that's the five sixty right there.
That's the five hundred and sixty, is that the house or is that the, uh, apartment?
That's the apartment.
It looks like the apartment with the porch on the side there.
Oh, this is twenty, that's not two oh six, so you have two, twenty, twenty by twenty-eight. Yeah, that's the five sixty and this must be.
Either half.
I can't tell if this is twenty, I guess that's twenty.
That's the front porch, twenty-eight, twenty-four.
I think it's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, well, by thirty-seven.
Eight, yeah.
Thirty-seven, it's gonna be a thousand thirty-six.
So this, the house itself is the one thousand thirty-six. And then the accessory dwelling unit, which of course, or the accessory unit, which is, uh, I guess going to be not associated with it outside of office space, um, I guess unintended use for office space.
Thousand thirty-six is also small for four residents, uh, plus two staff members.
I would just ask that the staff re-review the North Carolina Administrative Code or maybe the general statutes for what the floor area is required and compare it to what what the house can, what the house can accommodate.
Well, that, I mean, that's.
Make sure we don't, to make sure we don't approve something that can't be used.
Can't be used, right.
We would certainly need to reconcile what the administrative code for the state requirement of the group home, so as versus the size of the home itself. And the applicant's desire to have a certain number of residents and staff, we want to make sure that that can be accommodated on the property. I, I think that's my main concern is it's, other than being in a single-family residential neighborhood, uh, so just don't want to have anyone invest a lot of time and effort into something that doesn't work.
Any further discussion?
I'll just continue on the findings of fact that, uh, item two, I'm not satisfied that that is met. Number three, I'm not satisfied that that is met. Number four, we have heard no testimony one way or the other for the impact on adjacent property owned values, uh. I'm sure that'll be presented at city council, but we can certainly not comment on that. Item number five, it said it, it's, although it's in conformity with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, it's certainly not in conformity with the neighborhood, uh. And I, I cannot tell there is any vehicle circulation or provisions for any infirmed residents or, uh, visitors or there may not be visitors allowed, but if there's any infirmed folks, I thi- I think the applicant has addressed that there would be rear access that's available at, at a grade that's, that's able to be, uh, used at the back porch, but there are a lot of unknowns with this presented in front of us tonight that should be, I think, determined and, and
Agree.
Solidified in your mind as the applicant, uh. When you purchase a piece of property, uh, and you change the direction of your, uh, career, uh, or improve your, uh, career and, and become licensed, um, that's a big investment in time and I, I just, I just don't want you to move in the direction that it's not going to be fruitful for you. I, I think there's a lot of research left to do before you would go, uh, to city council with an application and expect for them to not give you the exact same inquisition we have tonight.
Yeah, I, I would like to add that I think there is a definite pressing need for facilities like this. I commend you for your desire to provide this sort of service to the community. It's, I think it's well worth the effort. Uh, having said that though, I'm not sure that, I, I still have some misgivings as Mr. Hafner is, as stated, I, there are too many unknowns at this point for me comfortable giving a, a recommendation to move forward with this.
I, I, um, someone has had someone stay in a group home. I can see the need for these facilities. And I can see them being in, in residential areas, so I'm not bothered by that whatsoever. But before this can be considered, we need to go back, back to the state, uh, statutes. On what size the area has, the space has to be per, per resident. And also what physical conditions the space needs to have in terms of sidewalks, ADA, it's, it's accessibility, things of that sort, or before a determination can be made.
Mr. Hafner, just, I will entertain, uh, your recommendation, uh, if you would like to make one, um, that we would be recommended to council to consider and look and follow up with, if you'd like to make them.
I'll be glad to. I just need some guidance on how to phrase it. Is it a, a, a recommendation for additional research? Is it a recommendation to pass it on to council and let them look at it?
And let them address the questions that we may have as this board, uh, in more detail.
Okay, I'd like to make.
Well, without a recommendation.
We're just passing it to council that we heard it. We're not going to make a recommendation or findings of.
Yeah, I don't even know if we include, I guess, the, uh, the questions that we've had more or less as, I mean, we, I can take those and certainly bring them back up, but when everything's heard in front of city council, it's going to be, I guess, under that quasi-judicial aspect of it rather than it's not here. So if we're providing outside, I guess, testimony, things that's coming from here, I guess, things that have been raised, then I can make, make a way, I guess, of however somebody could view it in a legal sense. So that's the only thing that I could think of.
So when this goes back before city camp, and if, if and, if and when this goes before city council, it's not going to be a meeting as we're having now. It's going to be a legislative legal proceeding.
So we're in the legislative right now, so when they meet. So it'll be based off witness testimony, all this, uh, kind of things along those lines, so. Um, but certainly, I mean, good points were raised and we'll, I'll look into it and definitely include it moving forward. Um, I don't think it's not something that's not going to be noted, um, as for the fact, but I mean, at the end of the day, it's still, I guess, it could be one of the conditions that before the group home is, I guess, is approved, but unless the state requirements are met, then it can't occur per se. So I guess that's one of the things that could be conditioned upon if it were to move front in that meeting in December. Um, if it all relies on whether or not she can get state-approved permits for that facility over there, if it does meet the state requirements. Um, so that could be something that's associated with the land and probably possible with the special use permit. But then again, like I said, it's, uh, however you all, I'd like to proceed with the recommendation, but it seems in legal sense from it, we're really only supposed to be hearing this in front of one board to begin with. And how it stays in the ordinance is, as the planning board, we are hearing it and providing a recommendation. However, the recommendation to proceed could be, I guess, viewed and has been viewed as, I guess, intruding on the quasi-judicial process when we're hearing it at one and hearing it at another as well. And providing a recommendation based on something that's not in quasi-judicial, so.
Isn't that what the town's attorney advised us to do last time?
Yes, sir. Is to move it forward with a recommendation, without a recommendation per se, or a recommendation that we heard it and we recommend that be heard at city council on December twelfth.
I just want to make sure that our concerns are noted, uh, that I, I've been to many city council meetings and I hear when this stuff is brought up before council. And I hear a very, very brief detail of what planning is on and talked about.
For sure.
And we've talked about this for almost forty-five minutes now. So I, I'd, I'd like it to own the record of what our concerns are. Not saying that we're against it, that we have concerns that the council just needs to decide whether they want to address or look at it or go forward in inquiring further or not, because I really think there's a, a need for the facility, but I also think there's a need, uh, for public safety. It fits in, uh, residential settings. I think they do fit in if, uh, everything's aligned right, but you know, who's to, to say that other than the council, what they want to see in a special use permit? But we can certainly voice our concerns, I think.
I think hearing Jerome's, um, position on the, the residential setting has helped me a lot, uh, for that regard. I, I almost want to make sure that the applicant is aware of all of these concerns and has had time to address them and prepare properly for the December meeting, uh, so that you are able to go in there with an, a, a, a presentation that is approvable.
Sam, did you get a copy of the agenda for tonight? Um, they are online.
Yes, sir.
And you can print that off, but it'll give you the finding of facts and there's six.
We have some in the back, back there, I think.
I think those are just the front page copy, but it's also listed on.
But the findings are in the back.
Well, those are just the, the, um, like, just the agenda, so the packet's not back through there. But Ms. Debbie has one, um, and it's also attached on the, um, application that was submitted as well, so.
Okay. I would certainly, uh, look at those one through six findings of facts and be able to address those with the council. Cause that's going to be probably pretty important, uh, to you, along with what we've talked about up here tonight.
It's on your next to last page.
Be page two of three of your.
So whenever we go into those quasi-judicial hearings, um, it is, uh, pretty much on the applicant to, to prove that all six of those requirements are being met through um, evidence, uh, testimony, things along those lines. Um, and if one of the six or all of the six aren't met, then it can't be approved. So if they find one of those six don't meet the requirements, then they can't approve it. So like they said, kind of getting burst on those six and making sure that you can present a case that those six are being met um, in the eyes of the evidence that you provide is kind of, I guess, what they're preiterating is that to get you a little bit more prepared when you move forward. Because, um, that's pretty much how it's going to be handled. It's going to be one of those back and forth type court proceeding, quasi-judicial stuff, cross-examining things, so.
Sure. I think there's a time limit from when we hear it to when the council has to hear it. And I don't think we want to, uh, table this. I'll hold the board if, if we want to table this for thirty days and then uh, that means it would come back on in December for us, then we could make a recommendation and then it would go to council in January, or do we want to send it on?
I, I'd have to look at that as, I, I think we can make a decision and it be tabled at city council, but I think they have to make a decision on it based upon X amount of time. Um, I think it's more or less is, um, if it sits here at planning board for too long, that's when it has to make a decision at the city council level. I think it's like, if it sits dormant within like sixty days, I guess, not a decision's been made, then city council may or can, or yeah, may move it forward to their agenda and make a decision on it. So I think you can make a decision and thus send in a written request to staff to, uh, table it to the January meeting. Um, because we haven't publicly advertised, um, in the newspaper or anything, we've just sent out on the letters for this meeting right here.
That would come from her.
What's that? Yes, sir. So that would be you writing something out to me stating such and it'd be put into the, um, the, uh, the council agenda or slid to them, or not slid, but put in, I guess, whenever it's brought up that this is being requested. The uh, the council agenda or slid to them or not slid, but put in, I guess, whenever it's brought up that this is being requested to be tabled to January. By the applicant and it's still maybe one of those things. I know when they've had some requests to table in the past, they still want the applicant to show up and maybe. Give a little bit of brief detail on why they're asking to table it. So it may still be a good idea for you to show up just in case.
Well, there's a time limit that you have to present uh, stuff to the planner for him to advertise. And um, he will tell you what the days are. So if you think you're going to want to carry that over to January. You'll probably have to give him a letter before a certain date. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we have to advertise within um, twenty five to ten days before the meeting. Um, so that has to be sent out prior to then. So I'll need, I mean, at least. Two, three weeks prior to the meeting to know whether or not you're going to do it or not, because um, like I said, I have to meet that ten day requirement.
What is your last day that she can submit the letter to you and then she'll know a definite date it has to be done by?
Yeah, so let's see, twelve. So the Friday, the first of December is when everything would pretty much get sent out. That's ten days before. The next city council meeting. Um, so I pretty much need to know something within like the next week or so.
You send me the first is next week.
Next Friday.
So she needs to, does she need to know? She needs to give you a letter before next Friday?
I don't know how that timing worked out. I guess it's whenever we didn't meet that first week in. November fell on that Wednesday, so we kicked a little bit down the road. So it's a short turnaround and I do apologize about that, but um, that's just the requirements that we have to meet. And of course, somehow I'll be in the office tomorrow. Um, I'll shoot you an email tonight with my contact information and the other planners' contact information, just in case you get something in tomorrow. Um, and it'll be in there Monday. Um, I'll be back Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, next week and Friday as well, so. Um, if you just get it over to one of us, we'll take care of it.
And Cameron, will the email be sufficient or does she need to do something in a letter and hand deliver it?
I think just a emailed letter should be fine, an attachment in a word document with uh, you know, dear blah blah blah, dear. City council, I'm subject request to and then kind of go in on through and through and forth, so.
Thank you, Cameron.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to make sure that we're all.
Cameron, how do we? Do a motion to move to city council? And then also to make sure our concerns are, what mechanism do we have for our concerns?
Well, I mean.
That makes sense.
It it does, and it's kind of one of those uh, interesting situations. Because it seems like the thought process from the legal and staff here is that. It be moved without any type of recommendation due to the fact of, you know, the aspect of this hearing and the quasi judicial hearing. But then again, at the same time, it's completely up to you all, if you all would like to make a recommendation moving forward. Um, that's just been the stance of how we've done it, I guess, the past time, because it does cause some legal issues. Um, between the two. It really should just be a one step process where one board hears it. Now, we've tried to do it in the past, but it just raises so many red flags and. Um, when we have to recommend something like you recommend denial, but or you recommend approval, they recommend denial, then it can. Looks like why did they have testimony during this one that they heard and they recommended approval, but you heard the same testimony and you saw it a different way. So that's the only reason why that kind of stance is being taken.
Let me ask you this. A good bit of what has been expressed here tonight is opinion. That would not be allowed in a quasi judicial setting. Is that correct? In the quasi judicial hearing?
It really depends, because I mean, she's going to be making the exact same testimony pretty much. Um, and they're basing everything that she has been providing off of what's in the finding of facts. Your, it's the cost or not the cost, but you know, it's all on the developer is to convince you that. The facts that she is saying is what is meeting this requirement is everything that she's stating out. Um, so that's more or less is where it comes from. It's not that you have an opinion, but. You kind of do, but your opinion is based on the fact that she's providing if this factual that it meets all of these six requirements. Based on.
Are concerns be considered opinion?
Not necessarily based on the.
We're in a court and we're actually the court. Of what we heard tonight. So it wouldn't be a, we can look at this and tell whether it meets the objectives or not. So that wouldn't be an opinion as far as it'd be a finding. We're not issuing a finding of facts.
And it's all based on what's been provided, um, and based on what's been provided. Does that meet those requirements in your eyes as the deciding people? But then again, like Chair Ward stated, we're not, I guess, classifying any findings of facts or deciding on any of those. Um, it's kind of like how when we dealt with the variance at the Board of Adjustment aspect is like. Um, where I kept on trying to, you know, push you all along to that, okay? Did what we hear tonight meet criteria one, criteria two, criteria three? We're just not in that. That's what happens at city council. We're more or less, I guess, hearing it and it says to make a recommendation. Um, and you certainly can, but sometimes those recommendations um. Can I guess cause a little bit of legal trouble, it seems, and it has in the past, so.
Can we? Move this on, say, have our proposal to move this on to council? Either approve it or deny it, just move it on to council, send it to council. And then have a side note, these are our concerns.
It and you could be, but then again, at the same time, it could be viewed that you portrayed all of your concerns to the applicant. And then they have the opportunity to present everything that you all stated in the testimony she provides at city council. Um, so it's not necessarily a recommendation coming from you all to council. It's more or less as your concerns to the applicant for her going to city council. But like I said, at the end of the day, uh, it's kind of completely up to you all. Um, I've pretty much said my piece and my stance, and I think the same stance as legal has, so. I think you all have heard it, provided your feedback um, to the applicant and it's now time for, I guess, your recommendation in that aspect, so. So it's a shower view applications for special use permits. Um, she may recommend that council denies special use and or approve the special use subject to conditions. Um, it says, you know, you may, so you may approve it or recommend below us, so. It's in the ordinance, I know.
Can you read them one more time, Cameron? What are our options are?
The role of the planning board in section ten point one four one, the planning board shall review applications for special use permits. Together with accompanying plans, maps and drawings. The planning board may recommend that the city council deny the special use permit or approve the special use permit. Or subject or permit subject to the conditions for individual special uses. Or approve the special use permit subject to the planning board's conditions for individual special uses. Wow, um, and or other reasonable conditions recommended by the planning board. And we may also recommend modifications of the original plan.
We haven't, we haven't seen a plan, so.
But you, you don't have to have a plan, I guess, because this is one just specific to the use, right?
Have to address a lot of things on the.
I'm sorry, I'm talking on topic. You go ahead, finish your.
It's a little bit back and forth, so sorry.
I think I was just talking about, we don't have a plan and the plan would show things that we're concerned about. And that was probably the end of my relevant point.
And you gave us the option to make an approval or de- or or denial.
Yeah, it states, uh, the planning board may recommend to the city council X, Y and Z. So you may do it. Um, but it also may come back with any legal interpretation as well. So that's kind of been the stance of. And we'll have to talk about this outside the meeting, because it seems like there's a lot of disgruntledness and I understand that as well, because it's hard on me too. But like I said, it's all the burden's on you all. I've read. I think we've gave our stance multiple times as well on this and it's also been uh, kind of construed by other legal councils as well. Through this process, it was at the last month's meeting um, with the other special use permit hearing. I know it's um. So you may.
Chairman, can I ask you a question? As the, as the city's. Planner. City's planner is able to help citizens and guide them in preparing. I hate to be redundant, presentations and meeting the requirements necessary for. A successful application. Staff is, city staff is there to help the the public. To facilitate the public's desires or ambitions to do what they want to do. Correct. I would want to recommend that the staff talk to the applicant and and help the applicant. With her plan.
I think it's a good option.
It's not given to us as an option.
Not given to us as an option. I mean, staff has its own direction that it's going in.
Uh, it's easy to pin it. I understand. I'll, and like I said, I feel like I've been open with her to try and help her out moving everything to city council as well. Um, but you know, as I mentioned, a lot of this stuff is listed out inside the ordinance. Um, and that's ultimately what I kind of go off of. If I'm not meeting those or the standards of you all, I do apologize. So that kind of hurts a little bit, but it's okay.
No, it's not intended to hurt at all. It's just a desire to help the public that I don't know as the planning board we're able to do.
Well, I think the staff is more or less in their report here. Staff's recommendation is in our package. And so they, staff thinks that it was suitable, what was presented to staff. Uh, but of course, it would be up to the uh, two boards here. Us or the council to uh, council ultimate authority uh, to either approve or deny it. So I think we've uh. Had a lot of discussion about this and uh. Really not a lot of what we're going to say, going to make the difference of what council may want to do. Uh, I do think we got some house plan that we need to talk about with the special use permits moving forward outside of the presence of this hearing. Uh, but I would entertain a, a recommendation from anyone. One way or another, if you would like to move it forward, not move it forward, if you would like to uh, take a vote on it or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll make a recommendation that we move it on to council without a board recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Passed. Me and Mr. Benish. That's not all I got of. Ma'am, uh, if you would, don't forget about the letter to the planner about moving it to January if you think you need that time. Because it is time sensitive and good luck. Cameron, I don't think we have any other uh. Agenda items, so I want to talk about a non-agenda item.
Yes, sir.
Special use permits.
Yes, sir.
We seem to be the only municipality in the area that's doing what we're doing. Um, I've had an opportunity to look at Burlington, Mabon.
Yes, sir.
And we're the only ones that are passing stuff through our board to council with recommendations and not taking legal legislative action.
Yes, sir.
Uh, which we're empowered to do. Um, council needs to determine whether they want us to wear this hat as planning board. And if they do, we want to hear our cases and if not, they need to take that legislative aspect from us.
Yes, sir. I understand.
We don't need to be in this position again.
I know. I completely understand that as well, but uh, you know, on my end of it, I think I've thoroughly expressed multiple times what it states in the ordinance. I mean, it's been looked at multiple times as well by me, legal, you all have seen it as well. Um, it mentions nothing about quasi judicial aspect of it. Um, it mentions the quasi judicial aspect picks up at city council. I completely understand it. I think at one point in time, it was considered to just go in front of the Board of Adjustment, actually. And then I don't know what happened. It just kind of stopped. But I mean, the Board of Adjustment, we already hear variances. That's pretty much all of you all, except for two alternates. Um, so it's definitely something I think that we were planning on working on, but the short term turnaround for this special use permit is what. Calls us to be back in this situation we are in, so. And I don't know, Chair Ward, if you saw in other municipalities where it's still going through this two step process. Or if it's just one body that's hearing it or not. I think a lot that what I've seen is this one body that's hearing.
Burlington just changed theirs.
To two people or just one?
Just one Board of Adjustment separate from the planning zoning.
Yes, sir. And I mean, it 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 ma- it makes sense, because I mean, a- at that aspect, this, you know, there's no point hearing evidence twice. Especially in two quasi judicial hearings, because it can get us into some, I guess.
It makes us very uncomfortable.
I can understand that as well, and it's a, it's tough for me to kind of work around through with you all and trying to retain information that may come up in a quasi judicial sense. That I don't want to come up against, you know, the city as well. So it may seem like I'm holding out information from you all, but in reality, I'm just trying to more.
Well, let me just say, uh, when we went down that path after several, several months. And convening again as a Board of Adjustments. Of course, Chairman Dean was in here and and Chad had to uh, abstain.
Yes, sir.
It 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 went awry, so to speak, and we went back down this same path seventeen times that night. Trying to stay out of a legal position with hearsay and thought process. And what people had rec- recommended and then turn around and change their mind on because of illegal fact. And it and it really changes the the board. It makes it very difficult.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you're still going through that same exact process as a Board of Adjustment. I mean, it's all about this finding of facts and it's all finding of facts based on what has been presented.
That there is is fine and good if you're a Board of Adjustment member and that is your process and you stick by. The law. When you're here, it's a little bit more opinionated. Where you're trying to help the applicant, you're not looking with blinders on just out of fact.
You're talking about from a planning board sense, and that's how, you know, where you take one hat off and put it on the other. And that's where, I guess, trying to get it out of your hands and at least in one single body's hands is where that flip flop is at. Because like like you said, I mean, a lot of people are taking out this two step process and not having a legislative hearing and then another one, because it's been an issue of. It seems to be, I guess, a legal aspect of it, but I understand.
We don't want to sit here for hours on end playing bad mittens.
I understand that too. And like I said, if it weren't for the timeframe of the submittal, we were in the process of trying to work on something to get it in front of one board. But ultimately, like I said, it's really dependent upon whether city council is open to that change or not. Um, and who they would want to hear it. It could just be that city council hears them from now on. It really depends on whatever directive that they have.
As Chairman Dean said, uh, if they don't want us to have that legal standpoint, they need to take it away.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Does that come in the form of a resolution that we should all vote on?
I think it's um, it could be even a form of.
Staff, uh, staff should be presenting that to council and saying what they would like to see.
For sure.
Their proceedings to go with that. But I know this is the second or third one that's come through us here and it's really. It, I mean, pardon my my language, I'll say is just a, it's a, it's a circus. We're hearing something that we can't, where we can, but we don't act on.
Yes, sir.
And it's just a waste of the general public's time that presented it. Yes, she got some good feedback from us, what our concerns were. Which may help her with the council, but it was just a big waste of time.
I understand. And I mean, that's um, you know, with the last meeting, it was, you know, we allowed people to speak, but the council on the other side was basically stating, you know. We can't let that go into any decision made because it's not, I guess.
Sworn testament.
Exactly. So and that's, you know, kind of back to where we're at. And uh, like I said, it's uh, I don't know how it's been handled before, but I mean, based on what everybody's read throughout the roles of. These different boards and associated with special use permits, that's how it's been interpreted and hopefully. Um, and it seems like it was one of the things where they were trying to get rid of it whenever I first started here as well, but it just went dormant, I guess, so. Um, trying to get that back and into one body is definitely, I think, the best court, of course, I actually move forward, but this one time.
I would um, like to ask you to um, reach out to our friends down in Chapel Hill and see if they'll give us a legal opinion on that.
On the two step process or?
And what they're recommending that municipalities should proceed with, whether it be council, whether it should be. Board of Adjustments or or what what their recommendation.
And I think a lot of that was updated during one sixty D as well, um, basically stating that, you know, one. And I think a lot of that was updated during one sixty D as well, um, basically stating that, you know, one party should be hearing it. Um, I vaguely remember looking through something and it's all within that one sixty D update to a lot of these uh, processes and procedures. Um, so, but I can look into that and reach out to them and see what they, but I think they'll probably end up saying, we need to appoint one single person, whoever it is. That's okay, but it needs to be one.
And that would be great, then that way, when you present this to the council, that.
You have standing behind it.
We've got your standing behind it, what the league is recommending.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, and then that may give the council a better opportunity to move sooner than later.
Yes, sir.
I totally agree.
Uh, you got any?
Can I throw my two cents in?
Absolutely.
Or, you, would you want to go first? I think, you know, from my perspective, I think one body would be the best way to go, like you're saying. What happened tonight was extremely confusing up here. I consider myself to be fairly, you know, moderately intelligent. And this, this is just a. A tap dance through a minefield. And I'm trying to figure out exactly what to say, how to say it, what can be said, what shouldn't be said. If it's confusing up here, I'm thinking about the person that's sitting out there, it's incredibly confusing for them, and Chad's right. We're here to help the public. Or to keep them in line, whatever the case may be. So however, whatever we can do to streamline this effort to make it clean, clear. For us and the public would be well worth the time and effort.
Yes, sir, and I think that that time and effort is definitely going into it, like I said, it's just the timing of this submittal. Where we had to go through another special use permit because we can't get a text amendment passed through within a month's time, so here we are. And that's one of the reasons behind it.
And I'm not faulting you for any of this.
I know.
Bear, bear that in mind. I think you're doing a good job, you know. I'll, I'll, I'll stand up in front of the city council down there.
No, no, no need to.
It's just. It is very frustrating.
The discussion's been um, held and I think it's being worked up, but it's just the timeframe of this because. They're going to have to hear the special use permit next month, so it won't be until probably January or something when. It may even get in front of you all and then February in front of them particularly, so it's been discussed between. Planning staff, administration and legal, um, that this is the route that we need to take. Same aspect with the whole Board of Adjustment stuff, I think we were unfortunately in this situation, we have to be reactive to the stuff that's going on, but I mean. It's what we have to do to, like you said, further streamline things to, I guess, help the applicants out there, so. Um, that's where we're at right now, I mean, there's nothing in writing currently yet. Um, basically, all that would happen is you take out the role of the planning board and just insert that in the role of whoever. Special use permit that it be, take out the role of. I- if it's just going to be on the Board of Adjustment, take out the role of the planning board, role of the city council and just put in their role of the, the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment will hear, Board of Adjustment shall hear all special use permits. And basically, everything else that's associated with it, so that's what.
Those people are trained, clear procedures. Have it down, I know it's in writing, but writing that you can understand.
Yeah. You're talking about applicant wise.
For them and for us.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, the hard part is, is it's hard for me to enforce state regulation for a. A, a group home per se when I don't have, because ultimately, they're going to be the one that denies it. Um, I can only say that, okay, you all said that a group home can go in here, now it's up to you if you can get your licensing or not.
But did it go before TRC?
No, sir.
Jimmy would know what, what the requirement was, and he could have maybe headed, headed that off and say, well, it don't meet handicap accessible. For commercial building of a group home setting.
Uh, this isn't anything that really goes in front of TRC, I don't think.
I think council had, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, Cameron. I think, I think council a while back and, and us as well directed. Special use permits, conditional zoning, all of those items to go before TRC before they get into the public hearing process.
But if it's, uh, that's the thing is, I mean, something like this isn't really site specific, though.
Exactly site specific, it's a special use permit that goes to the, to the property, runs with the property.
The use is what's specific to the property, not necessarily that they're building, it's one thing if they're building a new structure out there. But it's an existing home that's been utilized, it looks like in all the previous special use permits for group homes as well, there's never been a site planned submitted. And basically just saying that uh, all the parking requirement must be met in order to do all this, and they have to be the ones burdened to provide all that information. That it's being met out there.
Jerome, Jerome's.
Cameron?
Yes, sir.
Am I uh? Is the, a rewriting of this document of our role in this matter is being considered, correct?
Are, explain, you're talking about the role of you all as in?
In the uh, uh, special use permit.
So it really depends on what the direction that, I guess, council would give us, right? So whoever they want to hear it, um, are you asking if you can have a say as the planning board on who hears it or what?
I think you said something of, of the matter of that a rewrite of is, is in, is discussions about a rewrite has been, have, have been, have. Of our role has been discussed somewhere.
Not necessarily, I guess, the more or less what's been discussed is that one board needs to hear it. Um, not necessarily that we've been writing saying that the planning board needs to be the ones to hear it or the Board of Adjustment. But just that there needs to be a single board that needs to hear this. Eventually, whenever we get some sort of direction, there will be a text amendment that comes in front of you all that states. Who is going to be the ones that hear it. You all will be able to read that during the public hearing and make changes or things, and then it goes in front of city council for ultimate approval or denial or changes.
When's the soonest that something like that could be, appear before us?
It really depends, I mean, maybe even before that, hopefully after this, seeing, as you say, the circus, the confusion. Those, those words that have been thrown out, maybe we can streamline this process as well and present to them, it's like, hey. You know, this has become a big issue, not only for, you know, the applicants out here confusing wise, but even for you all. Being that, you know, this needs to be addressed, the same aspect is that variance and the Board of Adjustment stuff needed to be addressed and that it needs to be addressed in a timely manner.
So Cameron, I'm going to use words of the sort of, this is not just a circus. We are doing damage to the public. And that's a big matter. So whatever the timeline is, I hope it's expedited of some sort.
Yes, sir.
Anything further?
Yeah, just, just one quick comment. Talking about, you were talking about the state licensure, and I'm not picking on you, Chad. But is, is a question about the square footage or anything that's related to state licensure? Really appropriate for us to ask?
Absolutely.
I think it is in this case.
Because it's a special use permit, we could be, we could be granting or recommending approval of something that can't be approved to begin with.
Right, but that's what. So, a- and tha- and that's my point. There doesn't seem to be a real clear delineation of the questions that are really germane. To the proposal that we're given. And sometimes we, in this case, it might be germane, in some cases, it's not. I've seen, I've seen city council meetings that they talk, they bring up stuff that is totally not germane. To the proposal that's in front of them. So. I think it would be really helpful for us to know where we need to keep our mouths shut. And where we need to open them up, so that we don't get this board into legal trouble. Don't understand what I'm saying?
We had our own attorney, Mister Wooten, I've asked for it for the last five or six years and. That the actual planning board uh, needs its own attorney separate from the city's attorney. The city's attorney is representing the city council and the city manager. And if we could have our own legal person that we could ask. And direct and guide us, I think it would be most appropriate on a situation like this.
I would commend you on your diligence.
I've been asking for five years and I still say it again today that that's something that we need because, you know, strictly uh. Yeah, I better not, I don't want to make this comment tonight after the council, I wanted to say one more thing about finding the facts. This presented here, but I'd rather not say it because I don't want to jeopardize any proceeding that may go because we're still in a public setting. And the meeting is.
Yes, sir, I understand.
So, um, has anybody else got any non-agenda items they would like to bring up? If not, staff got in comments?
Y'all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
How about the Christmas lunch, does anybody know anything about it?
December, when is it, the thirteenth?
Normally sent out an email.
Yeah, but then I just wanted to bring it to your attention beforehand, because we might. We may not have a meeting before then.
Is it same place?
It's at the Trailhead Church, right, because the, the, the event center, I guess, they, they're not in an event center anymore, so. I, I, it either went under some.
So that would actually be the day before our meeting, so just a reminder that the city does do a Christmas lunch. Uh, for all city employees and board members and stuff, and it's the thirteenth, at what time?
Eleven thirty, I believe, is when the lunch starts and then twelve thirty is when the festivities start, quote unquote.
And Trailhead Church is over here on Harden Street, okay.
And dependent upon what I receive in the next week, um, I haven't received any new requests. Um, they got until the twenty fifth, so if I don't receive anything from now until then. Um, there's a chance we will meet in December unless I can get something next week rolling with this text amendment stuff, so.
Anything further? I'll make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor?
I'd give it to Mister Wooten, I think.